Donors and hear by given that a regular meeting town is going to be to take will be held Tuesday, the 11th day of June, 2024, 6:00 PM as town is going to be the city hall. Duke Fernandez gives the text seven eight by seven eight. Two in Texas government code six five five one point one two seven. One or more members of the town council may attend. It be a video conference or the town council will be physically present at the above meeting location. While the United will be discussed all the order at six oh three. Implication and pledge.
But thank you for the opportunity to live such beautiful blessed place we have here on Laguna Vista. Hermione and our thoughts and prayers go out to those across this nation who have suffered number of issues that have arisen, including severe weather and storms. Be with them, give them solace. Best that you provide guidance to this body to serve this into the best of our efforts. So you watch over this wonderful town responders who help watch over us and.
Yep.
Hold on. Councilmember Penelope's? Councilmember Brian?
Yeah.
So mayor, sour stuff travel at eight forty funeral and not back. And the meeting and the soul and had planned on being in the meeting, but her flight's about to leave.
Motion made by councilor. Towering missile.
Councilmember Romero? So the rest, councilman.
Yes. Yes. Open forum time yards is about three minutes per person. We address the council on any topic of discussion or formal action taken during this agenda. Speaker must identify themselves, which can request on much be presented to the city secretary prior to the meeting. You have three of them. First, we have Martha Ed.
My name is Marty Etheridge. I live in two fourteen Orange Ocean. I draw a map. I still look at. Well, just real simple, got a lot on foot traffic here at the Dollar General. Because of the Dollar General, but I've noticed in the last six months. We've also got people speeding through uh through the streets, which are orange, having to speak. So I pulled up a Google map to look at where the speed bumps were at. I marked those with little red dots on this map. I think if y'all just added or whoever needs to do this, three more speed bumps on orange. It would eliminate that problem. People flying through there. We've got a lot of kids in that area too. This really, it's not locals. I've noticed it's a lot of contractors. It's like the police speed up and speed down. So I think the speed bump will just. That's all I got.
Much.
Thank you. I should say use your.
Say something.
I'll give it to you.
Think we have Sandra Margaret.
Go ahead, Sharon. Okay, yes, I'm. Okay. Hello, my name is Sandra Margaret and my husband in the corner Eddie live at two three three Beach Boulevard. On June fourth, I finally suffered the proverbial last straw when I was coming home for lunch. And I turned on David Cuervo and I had to swerve around trash in the road. Not because I thought I was going to get in a head on collision with my big truck on a bag of trash. But because I thought that bag of trash in the middle of the road is going to get hooked to my bumper. And I'm going to drag that sucker down the street and the trash is going to spew all the way down. And I thought I better swerve around it, but then I got mad. Because this is the problem that's been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. And the source of the problem is the dumpster belonging to Peak Bay Apartments that is located on David Cuervo. So I ate my lunch and came to City Hall and I said, what can we do about trash? And the lady said, can you write a complaint? And I said, sure, I could do that. So I got home from work and I wrote up type the following complaint. Dear Miss Alcazar, I addressed it to Dubey. This is the written complaint on behalf of residents in Laguna Vista of the unhealthy and unsightly garbage situation existing at David Cuervo Street and Peak Bay Apartments garbage dumpster. As direct neighbors of the apartment complex, we are continuously bombarded with an open and overflowing garbage dumpster that is not properly being attended to by the apartment management. This is just the latest incident of constant trash overflowing coming from the Peak Bay Apartments dumpster. We are asking for relief from the filth and smell and litter being scattered across the street in our yards in the alley. We are asking for relief from having to look at piles of trash being eaten by possums and raccoons, birds, feral cats and rodents. We are asking for relief from entrance to our beautiful neighborhood. Oh God, I love our neighborhood uh being sullied and soiled by uncontained open trash. Laguna Vista is not a place that should have to suffer with this problem. Please help us find a permanent solution to this public health problems. That was my written statement and then bring around really quickly like 30 minutes and I got a whole bunch of my neighbors to sign it. So here, here you go. I don't know if you get it or not. I got it. Okay. Now, I almost made it to your house now. Okay, uh so. After I emailed that complaint, I received a very quick reply by Randy, Chief David, Steve Reyes and Dubey. A very positive reply to my complaint. And in the reply assurances that measure would be taken to um to make Peak Bay Apartments comply with our trash regulations. So I, this is no way is the complaint on on the city because they responded right away. Uh so I'm standing here.
No, 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 wrap it up.
Uh I offer some solutions. Uh fines that increase daily for every day that open garbage is not contained. Uh citations for littering, no dumping signs and fines that increase daily for bulk garbage and trash that are put out prior to the 10th of each month. And enforceable requirement that the dumpster have an enclosure, like the dumpster be enclosed with a door. So okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You did good. Okay, thanks.
I hate to be a Stanford calls. My senior. I was going to complain about the dogs who poop on the yard because that's important to this.
Uh as an architect and planner, 50 years in the business, one of the things I do serve on planning and zoning board was a various board. I also do for Cameron County. Sit on their camp, their planning board for North Water Island, everything north of the Frankies. We helped rewrite their code 12 years ago. It used to be nothing but a setup for residential. Everybody had to have set set the tank. So we had to rewrite it clear, rewrite the entire code. What I'm standing here today for is when we saw development coming here on the corner, but the lots are going in. Realize as I looked at it further, the only city in the county that doesn't have a water detention, water clarification requirement. Their plan was to dump all the water into bigger ditches, make it go straight out in the bay. Now I can bet that you're going to get a lot of complaints from everybody from Paradise Cove, everybody on Beach Boulevard. Because our water will be just nothing but silt. Uh we get enough of that when the wind turns brown. Uh part of the thought process I even had as well, because I live on the uh on Beach Boulevard is that I'd like to actually mark off an area that is no motors only in the shallow area from the marina all the way back to Bridgeview condominiums. Uh that's something for a later date possibly, but I'd like to volunteer as a member on our planning and zoning board to try to help update our planning and zoning requirements. There's a lot being missed. The golf course has it correct. Got a lot of good ponds along the golf course. So they pick up the drainage really well. In the main part of town and the new development areas, not so much. So I'd like to see us not drop all that water in the bay. That's one of the things I'd like to see have uh in the developments. If somebody comes in, they should have a letter. I'm looking at my water district saying they can supply the water. It's had times when we have very poor water pressure in our homes. Sprinkler systems don't work, water certainly not coming out of the hood, out of the showers, et cetera, et cetera. That needs to be improved. We need to actually, I think, a bigger water containment area for all the new houses going in. You're getting a hundred plus homes going in, but we're not getting improved water facilities. So I think that is something that will be required of the development. Other towns as well, if you go into Brownsville, Harlins, whatever city it is, they have requirements for park dedication. If you can't dedicate a park, you pay uh an additional fee to help improve the parks we already have. That's something we could add to our development program. It would help out everybody in our neighborhood. Part of that reason too is one of the things that I brought up. For partner, I don't know how many people know this, but when they went down Bethpage to the end of it, put in 30, 40 homes and tied it into the next street item. There were, I think, 15 or 20 people who had no electricity when they were ready to move in. Twenty-two? So you know what I'm talking about there? These these things, Jason's a great guy, but he's new.
You gotta wrap it up.
Wrap it up. The next thing I'd like to talk about is sort of after uh my son played basketball and was all team. He was first team all valley, all region, all district. He uh lost his knees in his second year of college playing basketball because he played on concrete. She has put a sport court surface that is bouncing. Maybe part of the reason is my life goes.
Thank you so much.
And she's losing her knees too. So we don't want to lose that opportunity.
Thank you.
That's half of what I'm. You can get back next time.
Okay.
Item A, new bid, special consideration possible action leads to following items. And it's consideration possible action. Question. Thanks, Jason.
Close. That's what I committed to.
Second. Brian second. That's made for team twenty.
Councilmember Dr. Romero? Number Penelope? Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Head card.
A few flash reports here on the.
So the first page in your financial report shows our general account that's balanced and our balance per books as uh May 31st is uh two million, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. So the the balance sheet. And then you turn to the income statement. In month nine of our fiscal year, which means we should be roughly at 75% of our revenue and 75% of our expenses. Right now for our property tax revenue, we are in about 95% collected. At the time last year, we were about 99% collected. So either way, we're uh doing very nicely. Uh for our total revenue collected, we are at 89% collected. This time last year, we were only at 87%. So we're about 2% higher than we were on our collection rate this time last year. So um and then for our expenses, same thing, we should be at about 75% of our budget. Um for this year, we're at about 62% of our expenses spent. This time last year, we were at about 60%. So we are tracking on budget and um and so if you have any questions about anything specific, I would be happy to answer.
First names concerns. Good to the upcoming budget season, which we're gonna next month. Looking good for everybody.
Yes, the budget meeting, um we'll get it scheduled together and start the budget meeting, the budget workshop probably in July and. It'll be a weekly last year's schedule that deadline have moved up whereas before we were finalizing it in September. But due to the new regulations that we need to be finalizing it much early, so that the goal is to have it finalized by the meeting in August.
You just need preliminary. Sounds from. Ever kept?
Um no, we we said we got the email that they are working on the preliminary reports, but I don't feel, I haven't reviewed one.
Haven't seen.
Yeah, I haven't. I I know I got an email about them coming, but I don't think I actually have them yet. So.
There's there's so much that's been. Field right now that.
Going to be at that deadline. It'll be interesting, but.
Any heads up on that?
No, uh other than. I'll put the tip, I will say that in front of the. How exactly late yet?
Anything else, guys? No? All right, moving on. Item three travel requests, consideration possible actions. Councilmembers Penelope, Brian and Hernandez to attend newly elected city of business orientation in San Antonio. By 15 to 19th or on August 8th to 9th.
So um we kind of the the section speaks for itself. We have a newly elected council members who'd like to attend the newly elected um orientation. And councilmember Brian and Hernandez have confirmed that they wanted to go. I was waiting to see if you'd want to go. So uh if you do expense and um tonight and while I get back there. Okay, so those two dates. Okay, um if they come up again, I will shoot the dates as you. We were, we thought that because of the year schedule. Yeah, so um before you have requests for councilmember Brian, he'd like to round rock the round rock um orientation on August 9th and 10th. And then you have a councilman Hernandez would like to go to the San Antonio training on July 18th and 19th. And then do you have any to both items or you want to do a proven at once? Are you going to? Okay.
But that will be the same amount.
Yeah, I'll just be double. And instead of eleven twenty-one seventy-two is for our councilman Brian, it'll be eleven seventy-three, so a dollar worth. I'll be done. So um. And then the next travel request is the annual MIP conference for uh so and myself. This is where we go to the MIP for the new council members, the program we use to do all of our finances and bookkeeping. And um last we started going or the training we started going to about, I think this will be our third year. And um it helps updated on any new software, any new opportunities of the software that we had to train us on some of the programs we uh have the modules that we've added on. So when, for example, when it first started, we didn't, we had still average purchase orders. And so when we went to the orientation, we found the probe, the module that did the purchase orders that linked into our system. So we added that this last year, the council approved of adding the HR module. And so we get training on those modules that we add. And so it just helps that benefit uh our system that we use here for our rights. So this is the the conference in that in October, uh seven through October 11th. Travel request for first for Brian and Hernandez and for business on this.
Motion made by councilor Brian, second by councilor.
Councilmember Penelope?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Head card.
Yep. Item four mayor pro temp, consideration of possible action to appoint, reappoint a mayor pro temp as. So this, every year, this time of year, we always appoint a new mayor pro temp and it kind of goes around. We we've always kind of gone with years served and. And this year, I'd like to. Let. Point Dr. Romero be the mayor pro temp for the next year. He's fantastic, on the board and very active. I need a second. Like to, all right. Motion made by second invite member Hernandez to appoint Dr. Romero as mayor pro temp.
Councilmember Dr. Romero? Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Head card.
Yes, and thank you for accepting. I don't know what's on him, but what's coming up for you soon. Item five, resolution number 2024 dash oh seven, consideration possible action to approve resolution number 24 dash oh seven. And given to town of meetings, thank you.
Council, this time before you at the regular maintenance, we have uh new council members. So we need to remove the old council members from our main signature part and add the new council. So in case anyone doesn't know, each check that we write has to be signed by two individuals. Um the typical process is this myself and one council. That way the council members have an idea of what's going on. And um so we uh so this is just a normal process to the bank needs its resolution in order to confirm that you guys all agree that it's a good signature. So.
I am going to do approve resolution 2024 dash seven, authorize the banking measures for the town.
Awesome.
Made by Mayor Carter, second by Councilman Brian to approve 2024 dash oh seven, banks measures for town.
Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Penelope?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Head card.
Yes. Item six, resolution number 2024 dash oh eight, discussion consideration possible action to resolution 2024 dash. Project direction number nine.
Council, I'm coming with you with the updated um ARPA resolution. As you know, we've had um two designations on there from pretty much the beginning for library computers and library weather stripping. Um the library weather stripping was worth seven thousand, nine hundred. The library computers were four thousand. So when we spend the ARPA funds, we have to um do a pretty um detailed process to go out for fund for people to send their quotes and um and uh we have had trouble getting these two items completed because either the vendors around here don't meet the requirement of the ARPA um requirements or uh like the library computers. We just can't get any of the vendors to uh play the bid. Um what we're told is, you know, four computers is pretty small potatoes on, you know, Dell or any of their uh, you know, work order techniques. So so they're not interested, it appears not interested in our four thousand dollars. So um after uh the the last couple of months, the the some of the requirements have changed on the ARPA and um we are able to designate funds to um the, like we did last time. We designated funds to the Laguna Vista Marina. And um so I went to our ARPA representative and I said, hey, if we can designate funds to the marina and I designate funds to the friends of the library. And then they can go get these projects done for us. Um just as the marinas would do, you know, the marina improvement, the friends of the library can take on the responsibility of the um improvement of the the library. So what I'm proposing is to um remove items seven and eight um and create a new line item to be number eighteen in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars to the friends of the library. And we will um designate those funds in the donation with some sort of um, you know, MOU or something that much like we do at the CDC that these funds are intended for, you know, uh and then once they do that uh improvement, they would submit some sort of documentation that show that improvements were made. That's what we'd use for our ARPA um supporting documents and so. So I made this resolution with this amount and then today uh we did get a different number for the bid that's going to cost significantly more than it originally did. So the number that we're getting for the weather stripping for the library has jumped from eight thousand to twenty-six to thirty thousand. We had two different, so the one and we we went back to Bayside. Bayside was the original one that gave us seven thousand, nine hundred. And today they came in at um thirty thousand. The one that had responded to us with ARPA, um but they didn't qualify. They didn't meet the qualifications. Their bid was twenty-six thousand. And so this is the weather stripping on the outside and inside of that big land. So um we can table this and I can do some more research and we can just wait or we can adjust.
Well, now that we're over that threshold.
So the the library, the friends of the library, we would just as we can. Is that the question? Is that the question?
I just think. Just the responsible staff. You would expect them to have. So those uh prices are not yet at threshold. German requirement. Us, we were. If we didn't, wouldn't be big necessarily, but that is, that wouldn't prevent us. See, we did three dollars. Yes, the issue then be, we would need to specify that. They didn't promise.
Right, he can do the M O U, that's like we do with the C D C, we can, we can lay out, you know, we want free bids, you know, we want, we um, you know, we can, we can do any, anything that one of us. I I can, we come next month and I can go and get the free bids and then um either that way the council can make. You know, more, it's a different choice, but I just, however you guys want to do it, it's just if we go through the, if we go and we want to spend ARPA money ourselves, we have to have the S A M S number and they have to be in better, you know, the federally federally qualified vendor. So whereas the Friends of the Library could uh.
I wonder what we're trying to do, it's just that we've come to a point where the money is. In 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 the right of blank check. And and then she could have. I'm kind of, uh uh you know, before it was, it was okay, you know, now it's, it's.
So if I can come, I can come back to you guys at the next meeting with the draft M O U. We just got that the fact before, right before the the meeting, so uh and if we can just table it and uh.
Any other questions? People, we, this, this bid, I mean, this original thing came in. Four years ago?
Yeah, it came in twenty twenty-one, right, one of the, the Bayside bid was, the original bid was twenty twenty-one.
We've been trying to get this done for.
Yeah.
Been up in our, you know, you get whether it's. That building and a lot of water intrusion, it's important to get it down, we gotta put a new heap on the buildings. You know. Inclusion has been bad, now we're, they're going out. We need to get it done. So with the table is. Motion made by Mayor Carter to table the item and seconded by.
Uh Councilmember Dr. Romero? Councilmember Brellian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Yes.
Item seven, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh two, consideration of possible action on the first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh two. Regulating parking on Harborview, Harbor Town and Harbor Point.
So um it was requested to us that we um needed to. Right, fourth street, we are spending this ordinance for consideration, the parking on these three streets is very narrow and it is not large enough to have people parked on the street and have an emergency vehicle. Have a way to get um down the street, so we are asking that the permits be passed that no parking on the street for the, this three streets, Harborview, Harbor Town and Harbor. This for informational purposes, the the street is only eighteen bit wide, so it is not, if anyone's parked on the, on the street, you can imagine. Fire truck not being to get. So for the public safety, we're asking that you guys consider.
And we have a couple other streets in in the dome, of course, period that we have no part. Here's near the dome. Same exact reason. As you guys know, that. Harbor's now is completely built out. Up there and it's. This is. If the motion do. Oh two, to approve the uh, to regulate in the parking, the harbor, harbor town and.
Sir. Do we need to read?
Yes. For twenty twenty-four dash zero two, ordinance by town council, town will release the regulated parking or storage of cars, trucks, tractors, trailer, boats, boat trailers or other vehicles screened right away in Harbor, Harbor Town, Harbor Point. Feel like the ordinance is providing severability, by penalties and providing.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Brellian?
Yes.
Member Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Item eight, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh three, consideration of possible action, particularly important number two. Regulating talk, these dog walking areas.
Council, this is being brought to you um before you um in the course of progression, that we've been talking about a dog park and um kind of just the first steps of uh moving towards that. So this ordinance would allow the dogs to be off leash if we were to um create a dog park, so it's just sort of the first step in um. Working towards that goal and if we don't ever create a dog park, that, you know, I mean, there's no, there's no balance having this here, right, then if the uh. It's just a first step because the ordinance takes two readings and so just trying to move that project along, so if and when it gets funded, we're ready to.
If I may, I've been there and council, I've put this together and and this is, I think I explained the last meeting, the the main role of the ordinance here is. Is to, one, uh create the exception for uh dogs needing to be on a leash within a facility that we can find as a dog park. And and two, to provide for a mechanism to enforce the rules. So that's what, that's what this does, and it's got, it's got some rules in here, and these aren't set in stone, this is just the first reading, uh if uh, after you, you know, read this or you have a chance to read it further. You want to make some different policy choices in terms of the rules that we apply here, that's something that we can do between now and second reading, for example, can I have, I have. Just the. I just threw out a hours of operation put in here that has six A M. to nine P M., want you uh make that earlier or later. Uh or at different hours depending on whether it's summer or winter, daylight, that's. Uh uh and within the rules themselves, there are other policy choices here. And by the way, I I I took a lot of these for other communities established in the rules for a dog park, for their dog park. I just, for example, here, I've got a limited, two dogs being handled by one person at any one time to apply that to, consider decrease uh minimum age here to control or bring in and control a dog seventeen years old. Over that. So again, nothing here is set in stone, there's spitball, rules that are. Also, uh these are, these are by ready to use, the rules that qualify to a facility in the event this one uh or more. See, this doesn't establish in particular place. So. So.
No, we should do the first reading and then just. Still moving forward with the possibility of dog park. Be reading on. Hey there. Yes, sir. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero three, ordinance, town council, town of Laguna, set forth rules and regulations for all these dog walking areas in town, fighting for family, fighting for policy for.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Brellian?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Yes.
First step is now completed. Any thought?
I want to find what it's. Hard to think what rules I want. You can't make sure you read it very close.
Nine, municipal court judge, consideration of possible action to renew. Initial court judge services, any.
Council, this is coming before you today, we have um a municipal court judge, who is Judge uh Jim uh Jim Hunter, and we're coming to to renew his contract and um. That we asked for winter, he's still be willing to serve, maybe that he's still willing to serve for a few ways, but not. He's been serving um. I don't know when he started, but he's been serving, yeah, I think this is third renewal, so.
He's, he's been fantastic, he grew up. Or delinquencies on, items are down prior years. Only Jim Hunter and those, based on that. Things are going much smoother now. Any other concerns about? Anything? Questions?
And it's a two-year term, so.
I'll then watch new proof. Judge Jim Hunter, continue to be judge. Motion made by Mayor Carter, second invite Councilwoman Brellian is due of us. Pro Jim Hunter as a court director.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Brellian?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant? Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Yes.
Item ten, alternate. Consideration of possible action to renew the contract, the alternate municipal court judge.
Well, same, same concept, we do have an alternate judge, so in the event that Judge Hunter can't um hold municipal court, we can call in Judge um Ochoa and he will come do it. Judge Ochoa also handles um all of the uh arrangements for our police officers when they arrest someone, and he's super good at day or night, the the guys get a hold of him and he's um, he's awesome and. And she highly recommends the the retainment of of him for our alternate judge and this could also be for a a two-year term.
He's been our alternate judge as long as like, I've been here thirteen years and uh. He'll, he 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 will, he he's the guy that will always be there. Make sure stuff gets done.
To call him, you know, on on the bike report multiple times and meet, be able to.
Yes.
Because it says turn them off this November. So should.
But the, we we can do it in a way that the uh. Contracts have to run from from November to November, two years in terms, uh the the town has always approved it prior to the expiration, I know that the contracts. You know, they trumped for a couple of months after, I don't know that there's been a time when it's been this long after the expiration. Uh and and I'm, Brendan and I were talking about. How it passed us that that term expired November, I had to say this. These were, but but there would be nothing that would prevent of us from updating it to to go June to June, if you want to do that. Uh if it, if it wouldn't invalidate anything that the that the judge has done on the expiration this, now they're, they they serve until they're successful. So um I I had to set these up to mirror what we had done past. System and again.
Make a motion.
And motion made by Councilman Bryant, second invite Councilwoman Hernandez to approve any of joy at their alternate.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Brellian?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Yes.
Item eleven, executive session, second, closed session in accordance with book game. Taking matter listed on the agenda, pursue section five by. Attorney, five by one point zero seven to liberation. Five by two seven, first liberation regarding personnel matters and five by one. Eight seven liberation. Going to go talk about uh. Five by one point zero seven, one is ready, free client, salt, town attorney regarding that bill, let's say regulations.
The regular.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's on the regular.
Yes, exactly, yeah, section five by one point zero seven, part of liberation regarding city man. What made, uh, I should go into executive session? Second invite, I need to go into executive session.
Councilmember Dr. Romero?
Yes. Yeah.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Yeah.
Great, it's forty-eight minutes. Back. Into session seven thirty-eight. Consideration of possible action, we go to executive session deliberation, will be no action taken. Bring on the item thirteen, city manager report.
So council, there's um just one, one major thing I want to take the time to talk about on the city manager report, um that, just so you guys can be chewing on it for the next um. Uh meeting, is that it's time for the C P B D, uh the community development grant, lot grants, um it's time for those applications to uh. Start being considered and projects to be considered, so uh as some of you might recall, our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five C P B grant application. Um was rejected because we had an outstanding uh issue with the previous grant, all that's been corrected and we are um eligible to apply again for the twenty. Five twenty-six grant, so it's time to consider this grant, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant um that we use to do our street improvements. Um the grant is getting harder and harder for Laguna Vista to qualify for because our L M I is slowly, you know, we don't have an L M I slowly, but surely, so good problem, but not. So we have two options, um well, we have one option is just to do our uh previous uh application, which would be um. It was a little small piece of streets, uh that I I put on the map there before you guys, it is uh. It, oh, it was that there's two small blocks that qualify with the Zonda Street between Hallam and Taylor and Davis Street, that was the application that we had already done. All the surveys, everything would still be valid to use, so it would just be a matter of updating um for for that. The one thing that I am looking into and looking for is to see if we can piggyback um this grant application to the current G L O drainage grant application that we are short fund on. So that's what we're trying to see if we can apply these funds to the drainage project that we already have out going, so I will have more information um for that for you guys. Um because again, that that's the one I came to you by last month and, you know, advise that we were having to cut it up into two phases because there wasn't enough money to finish it, so. If we can apply that to that, that would be an option for you guys to consider. The uh other uh thing that I wanted to make note in our uh, in my command report is the um. Ratings for the insurance service officer, I have the rating, um this was done, our volunteer fire department gets uh reviewed and uh they came back and were happy to tell you guys that they had a four by four rating, which is. Um very rare and above average for. So this rating is what helps everyone's owner's insurance stay very low, the fire department got um. Very, very good review, very good report, and this is very, very good news for. Very, very good review, very good report, and this is very, very good news for everybody. So this means we're, um, you know, there's, there's not a higher rating for a volunteer fire department. So, um, and even some paid volunteer fire departments are at this rate. So, um, I wanted to give a shout out to Chief Waters and the fire department for making sure that all of, that all of our hydrants were tested and passed and, and things like that. So I just wanted to make sure the council would, uh, uh, informed of that and the, the community that that's, that's a really good thing. And, um, so just one more thing for the event, I just want to give you guys a quick, uh, run over of the events we have upcoming is our Fourth of July. We need our sponsors, if you're going to sponsor us by, um, tomorrow, I believe the deadline was in January, get the logos on the shirts. So if you know of anybody that wants to sponsor, not making our contract with anybody.
What's, what's our deadline?
Tomorrow.
I don't know, but.
We're just.
Close on business?
Yeah, we just need to make sure that ours, we can put your logo on.
But ours are very, right?
Yeah, we're, we put you, we assume, yeah, we put you on there. Yeah, we click, so we just, uh, but yeah, uh, we, if, if you know anybody that still wants to, we just need to know, we, we don't even have to have the check, I just need the commandments, I could put the logo on the shirt and, uh, we're good to go. So we have that coming up, but this week we have, um, on July fifteenth, we have Judge Ochoa's event for the, um, the, the fishing with kids that I wanted to make note of. We are going to, um, be donating water or they were trying to tell us that they needed anything else, we're going to, the Luna Vista will donate some, um, waters or anything to that event if, if they need. And then on Sunday, the, um, the skaters, um, the, the local skaters, uh. Group wanted to hold an event at the Gwin Bowl, so they're holding a Father's Day kind of barbecue at the Gwin Bowl with them and, uh, they will, uh, skate right after church, roster just kind of taken on helping us maintain the Gwin Bowl, they're using it for youth. Health reach and things like that, so on Saturday around twelve thirty, they'll have, you know, some music and stuff over at roster for the Gwin Bowl and, um, so that will be, they will.
Sounds like a British voice.
Yes, yeah, it's, um, Ralph.
British English voice, yes.
June, it's six.
Is it just July?
Well, I was wrong.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's June, it's, it's Father's Day, yeah, so and, and, well, the city is going to provide some dung and waters for, for the kids for, for that event. You, it's open around fifteen, make kids participate, um, and, um, I, I told them that they could come and have a, a table at our, uh, July event and, um. So those are, those are the big, big highlights coming up that I wanted to make sure everyone knows is going on in the community. And so if there's any other department specific question, but otherwise.
Any questions? I'm at three times. So. That should be like, if, if we're Brian. That kind of against Member Hernandez doing your.
Member Dr. Romero?
Yes.
Uh, Cornelius? Councilmember Bryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes. Thank you, guys.